He always thinks good.
That was you. Thank you in prayer. It was great, Father. We thank you to this day you give it to us, Lord. Thank you for all you many blessings that you give us, Lord. And Lord, we're grateful to be with each and every decision that we make, Lord. That we always seek your guidance and everything that we do that will be the best for our county and our state, Lord. Last of these things in my name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call meeting to order. Mr. Sonny, you're the man of the hour. We appreciate you coming, taking time out of your business schedule to come up and talk with us.
Okay?
Anything you can tell us, we'll take heed to.
Um, is it okay if I just sit? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, first, I appreciate y'all letting me, letting me come up. When I became Executive Director 10 years ago, I said, I'm gonna get out and go to county commission meetings and visit with the commission and, uh, you know, try, try at least to give them some, some thoughts from the association on things that recur. You know, generally speaking, there are no new problems. County government's what county government is, the problems you're facing, you know, were faced by another county a year ago and will be faced by a different county a year from now. The, the solutions are different in every county, but, but the problems are, are recurring in county government. We, we don't, we don't solve a lot of problems. You know, the government doesn't solve a lot of problems. We, uh, we do the best we can to respond to, to the challenges we face, but putting a problem to bed is, is very, very difficult to do. And I, I appreciate you, you know, coming up and spending some time with you. It's, uh, it's always good to get out of Montgomery and, and, and to get away from there and to have opportunity to come out where everybody lives and what, uh, and for me to get the chance to see y'all in a little different environment and y'all having to listen to me all the time at train classes and conferences and stuff. Uh, I sent a couple of things late last week on Friday, I guess, uh, to Brooke for her to print for y'all to have when the meeting's over. Just a couple of national publications that deal with the whole issue of, uh, jail construction and, and seeking and obtaining community support and buy-in for the idea of, of responding to jail overcrowding. Okay? Um, and I think what you'll see from both of those is, is that if it's successful, it's a cooperative process. Uh, it's a process that involves more than just the sheriff and the county commission. Uh, that, that if it's, if it's just the six of y'all working on this, it's not likely to be particularly successful. That, um, it's a, it's a big decision for the community and, and ought to be made, uh, you know, advisedly as to still align out of, out of, you know, it's a decision to be made. After you have looked at all the data you can get your hands on and that you have considered, considered all alternatives and, and, uh, everything that can be done to try to save some money. You know, um, this will be surprising to everybody who doesn't know me in the room. I'm gonna be straight with you today. I'm gonna answer whatever questions you ask me based on what I know. And I'm not gonna, y'all know I don't generally should look up things very much, but I'll, you know, I'll, I'll tell you what I think. It'll, it'll be worth what it costs you to get it, which is nothing, uh, but, uh, but I will try to tell you, based on 30 years of watching counties, uh, what's worked and what, what hadn't worked. Um, you know, uh, my role is not to tell you that everything's gonna be fine and that this is gonna be easy and that everybody who's gonna stop you on the street is gonna say, you know, "Boy, I'm real happy about this jail project." That, that's not likely to be how it's, how it's gonna happen. Not one of you who ran because you wanted to build a new jail. You know, you had other reasons why you ran. But you've got a responsibility to, to the community and to the county to address the problems that come up on your watch. Okay? Uh, whether they were the motivation for you running or not, you, you've gotta deal with the problems and the, and the issues that come up on, that come up on your watch. And, and this is an issue that, that, that's here and, and we either deal with it in a productive way and a way that moves, moves the community forward, or, or it becomes something that, that does, does the opposite. So, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but y'all know me. I'm gonna always be willing to kinda tell you, um, what I think. Uh, for those who wonder too, and here don't, don't know me, I, I came over to the association in, in 1988, which I used to whisper that date, but, uh, almost 31 years ago. So I wanted to just kinda give you some observations about what I've seen happen in other counties. Um, and, and, you know, kind of what's worked and what's not worked. Okay? And I've written out four or five things that I wanna make sure I, I say to you this morning. Um, yeah, the issue of jail construction in other counties has often been more of a, a decision that's been politically driven than being business driven. Okay? Not always. And again, these things I'm gonna say to you about what's happened in other counties. I'm not saying any of that is what is happening, has happened, will happen, might happen. I'm just saying these are some things I think you can learn from. Okay? And that is to try to make the process be more of a business decision and less of a political decision. Okay? Can remember talking to county commissioners who would say, well, there are 90 votes in the jail. You know, no, 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 nobody's gonna stop me on the street corner and tell me that, that, uh, the most important issue that they're facing in their life is that they want you to build a new jail. That, that's not gonna be what happens. Uh, you know, uh, it shouldn't be a politically driven decision. It ought to be a business driven decision. You know, a decision that, that, that you go into and that you evaluate the same way you would evaluate if you were trying to start a new business right here in county. You know, you'd try to take emotion out of it. You'd try to take political issues out of it. Gather your facts, get all the details that you can, get all the advice from everybody that you consider to be, uh, someone that can be helpful to you and then enter into the decisions that you make based, based on that information and not, uh, not based on anything else. Uh, there, there are a host of counties that I won't list, but that, that I've watched in this process make a decision based on, on political motivations, on one side or the other. Responding to, to outside political pressure. You know, I would say to y'all that to the extent you can avoid all that and try to make the decisions you make purely business, I think in the long run, the county will be much better, better served. And, and I, I can give you counties without names on both sides. Counties, counties where the decision's been made from a business standpoint and, and it's worked well in the community and then places where the decisions have been made on other motivations. And almost from the very start, everybody involved was unhappy. You know, not just the commission, but everybody. The legislators who've had to help you fund it. The sheriff has gotta try to run the jail after it's open. Uh, the judges who, who need access to the jail so they can carry out their duties. Almost without exception, if the decision's politically motivated, everybody ends up being unhappy. Okay? I'm gonna go through five or six things and then I'll stop and see if you have questions and we'll talk about some other things too. I think often the decisions are made, uh, and other counties have been, after getting advice and, and insight and proposals from only one group. Let me, let me set the, or one source, just say it that way. I don't need to be the only person to talk to. You know? Let's set, let's, let's set the jail aside and talk about borrowing money. One of the shortcomings I think that we have, we've had as an association over the years for services to counties, and then we've never, we've never figured out how to give you the materials and tools you need to, to make a borrowing decision in the best way. The only people who show up in this, this room or the other 66 rooms around the state talking to you about borrowing money are the people who only make money if you borrow money. And, and the only folks who really know anything about that integral decision are the same people who only make money if you borrow money. I would say in, in the jail business, you know, you need to get some advice from, from people who have experience in it and, and who don't have a motivation for how y'all guys end up landing and what you end up doing. Okay? And again, counties have been all over the board on that. Those that have gotten advice from more than one quarters, uh, I think if that's gone better. You know, I think often in other counties, the alternatives to constructing a new jail weren't completely vetted and explored before the decision was made. You know, if we go back 20 years ago, there were no alternatives. I mean, there wasn't anything. You know, you, you got picked up for violating the law. You went to jail. You got tried and sentenced. You went, you went to Montgomery to go through Kilby and then they, they sent you somewhere. You know, today, there's, you know, the community corrections, there's, um, drug courts and veterans courts and, you know, there, there, there are other alternatives that are out there. And I think that, you know, um, evaluating those and, and making sure you're availing yourself of all those, uh, I think is an important, uh, element in what we're, what we're talking about doing. In, in other counties, community support and the involvement of the community has been a missing piece in what counties have done. You know? I think if it's gonna be an effective project and program, involvement of, of the community leaders is essential. Now, that involves some elected people. Okay? But it also involves the community leaders that aren't elected officials. The, and I don't know who those people are in Marion County, Alabama, but y'all do. You know, who, who, who are the people who drive community opinion and whose support is, is important to whatever you wanna do? I think failing to involve those people in the process, um, you know, is gonna make the process more difficult. You know? You know, y'all remember at your, at, at the orientation, I told you, you're part of a governing body. You're part of a body that represents the community and decisions need to be made advisedly. You know, they, they need to be considered and you need to, to seek input from more than just, uh, you know, the fact that y'all sitting around the table. And so I, I do think if I, if I leave you with one thing this morning, it's gonna be, I think you need to strongly consider in one of the documents that you'll have for you. It's kind of an outline on how to put together, um, a, a community committee or an involvement team or a task force or whatever you might call it to, to generate support. Okay? I mean, the bottom line is y'all don't have the money to pay for a jail, do you? Bottom line. You know, well, if you don't, you know, then there're gonna be folks who are gonna be asked to help you. You know, they're not gonna be, I wouldn't speak, I've never been in the legislature, but I've watched the legislature a long time. If, if a member of the legislature is gonna be willing to consider revenue to help construct a jail, the community's gotta be supportive of that. The community's gotta be supportive of it. Without, without community support, it's not gonna be successful. Okay? Operating a new jail is gonna be more expensive than operating your current jail. I don't care what anybody tells you. And I've been a jail constructed in the 30 years I've been at this association and there have been 35 or 40 jails constructed in that time. Not been a single one that didn't cost more to operate. It's gonna cost more to operate and, uh, and the, and the counties that have gotten themselves in real trouble have been counties that have said, "Okay, what, what's, what's the bottom line dollar it's gonna cost us to build this jail? 4.2 million. What's that gonna cost us?" I'm just pulling a number by the way. Just making that up. What's it gonna, what's our bond payment gonna be on that? Blank. Then let's figure out how we get that revenue and not a penny more. Those counties have hit the wall on trying to fund the rest of county government. It's gonna cost you more to operate a new jail than, than the one you're operating now. And that, that's just, you know, sheriff and I hadn't talked about it, but, but if it doesn't cost more to operate this one, you know, it, it'll mean you're way outside the curve. And then finally, or almost finally, if, if the goal is to have a jail with empty beds in it, you know, we just all need to move along. That, that, it's not gonna happen. Now, there are counties that, that, you know, have, um, you know, that are, that are in a different financial condition than y'all are that have overbuilt their jail on purpose. Okay? For the purpose of housing federal inmates or those kinds of things. And as the federal inmates have a flow, they may have a few empty beds here and there. But, but, you know, you're gonna fill up the beds that, that are in the jail that you construct. I mean, you just are. And, um, and then the last thing is that, you know, the money you raise to construct a jail is money you won't have for something else. Okay? And, and I think that's important for you to recognize that, uh, and for that reason, it's a critical decision. It's a critical decision. If you raise money to, to construct a new jail and to operate it, then whatever that revenue source is, that, that revenue source is gone for other things that the community or the county might need. And I think it's, that doesn't mean you don't need to do it. I'm just saying that, that, that's another one of those things back to the very first point. That is that it's not a, it's not a decision that ought to be based on politics. It's a decision that ought to be based, based on making a business decision and recognizing that, um, that revenue source, whatever it is, it's off the table when, when, when it's identified to be the revenue source for, for, for new construction. That's a lot to listen to in 15 minutes probably. Let me, 20 minutes. Let me stop and see if y'all have any questions or get up with the rest of my notes.
Mr. Chairman. I don't, anybody have any questions? Right, the sheriff?
You made some very good, interesting points, Sonny. First of all, I would say thank you for coming, taking time out of your busy schedule to come up here in Northwest Alabama. Welcome to Marion County. This is the project we've been talking about for several years and we understand the ramifications that may come here and there. You made a good point about being more business oriented instead of political. That's a big thing that we run into sometimes. Another good point, guys, is whatever we build and if we can even build one, it's never gonna be big enough. We're gonna fill it up pretty quick. Uh, that happened in Winston County. It's happened in several other counties. You know, we just got, we've gotta get started somehow. We just need a good, really solid starting point. As far as the community goes, Mr. Brassfield, um, I've had a lot of support. I've had a lot of people contact me. Every grand jury that comes to the county jail has, has written up a report suggesting to the circuit court judge, presiding judge, we need a jail. And it's, it's, it's in the need of a jail. Several different reasons. Number one, the building's deteriorated. Uh, number two is overcrowding. I don't know what the stats are here is county or statewide on female inmates, but ours is out the roof. Uh, the shares, some of that I've talked to said their numbers are going under. Uh, you talked about alternative sentencing pretty much and we've already done it. Presiding circuit court judges have drug court, uh, different kinda community corrections, whatever. But we're still getting backed up and, and I'm gonna harp on the state of Alabama for a minute. Tracy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go right ahead.
But legislators, when they change sentencing guidelines, you know, we didn't know how that was gonna affect us until now after a period of time's gone by. Uh, they're eliminating prison overcrowding, but it's hurting the county jails. And that's why my numbers are up because of probation, parole fees and things like that. We understand, we all in this room understand where we're at. We just gotta have a good starting point. Our problem is like any other county, most other counties, we're broke. We don't have the funding and we understand that. Now, I have attorneys breathing down my back, uh, wanting to file something in federal court. They just haven't done it yet, but I feel like it's coming. So if we can step out front first and foremost, we'll be better off that way. You know, I, I don't know what else to say, guys. We know what we're facing. I know it's a tough decision on all of us, even myself, but, uh, we've got to do something. And Sonny, I surely appreciate you coming up here. Uh, I admire you. Got to know you through the Sheriff's Association and value your experience and knowledge.
You, and, and Sheriff's right, uh, as it relates to the changes that were made by the legislature in 2015. And we, we're getting ready to release a report comparing our jail and law enforcement expenditure statewide in 2014, which was the last fiscal year before the prison reform was passed in 2015, comparing the 14 numbers with last fiscal year, 2018. The, the increase in cost statewide is a little over $64 million, which is more than twice the rate of inflation. So it's clearly the sentencing changes, the parole leads being housed in the jail, uh, class D felony changes. You know, y'all adopted a resolution at our convention, which we hadn't sent to, to the legislators yet, but, says the association's gonna oppose any prison reform changes until we go back and address the mistakes that were made in 2015. It's not gonna make me real popular in Montgomery. Not gonna make us all real popular in Montgomery. But just real quick, I, I, our state inmates statewide, uh, which are the parole violators, the probation violators, and then the state inmates that are in our jails that have been tried and convicted, um, up 150% from 2014 to 2018. 150%. The state's jail, prison population's down 19%. So state, we got the same amount of people doing bad things. All right? We hadn't done anything in Alabama to get people to act there. All right? We had the same amount of people doing bad stuff. We just got them in a different place. The state prison system is in much better shape. You know, that, that's not anything I'm here to try to solve today, but that, that, it, it is part of the reason why your situation has, has, has gone from bad to worse. You know, not, not the only reason, but, but, but it is, it is part of the reason for sure.
Sonny, I'll say this too. I used to be under the false impression that the state got his business in order. Excuse me. That would help the sheriff. It's not. I mean, when the state, when you struggle, how like I said, the same number of folks, it's not gonna be, we're actually building some new prisons and now all of a sudden next Monday we flip a switch and everybody at the county level gets to go to Montgomery and get sent out through Kilby. But I will say this, I wanna commend the county commission. I have watched them work on this for quite some time. They know the hurdle that's gotta be cleared. I appreciate these guys having the courage to address the same and be said for the sheriff and I'm grateful for the relationship I feel like we all have as partners together. We know we've got to get together to do something to fix this problem. And I'm grateful that everybody's willing to come to the table and lay the facts on the table and decide, okay, now what do we do? We know what the problem is, but how do we fix it?
Well, and it'd be important for y'all to be together. Okay? By y'all, I mean the, the elected leadership in the county to be together. You know, cause, cause whatever you do, y'all, and, and, you know, Bob's been in office, you know, by as long as I've been in the association, there's nothing you can do as an elected official, and I've already learned it in, you know, in a year, that, that you can do, it's not gonna be criticized. Okay? By somebody. You know? Uh, you know, you could, you could decide, you could get a basket full of hundred dollar bills and stand out there on the corner and hand them out. Somebody'd be griping that you didn't give them five twenties. You know? I mean, but there's nothing we're gonna do that's not gonna be criticized. But, but to get where, where the, the community, uh, what's in the best interest of the community, y'all got to try to stick together. Y'all gotta come up with a process. What, what's the next step and take that next step to, to get Bob?
What, uh?
I'm far as Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. What have you observed over the years of different types? I'm not asking for which, some are better in some situations, scenarios are better. What types of finesse in jails? I mean, I mean, different ways of, of, kind of, kind of finesse jail, right?
Well, now, you know, I think if you, I think if you got out there on the street and, and asked those folks who were giving hundred dollar bills to you, they, they would tell you, figure out a way to make the people who were staying in your jails pay for it. Right? I mean, that's what, that's what they'd say. Um,
We all know that's not.
Yeah. I don't know how you do that. I mean, I don't know how you do that. You know? So we, so we set that aside. We set aside the way that the public would say is the best way to do it. Cause that's what they would tell us. You know? Figure out a way to make people that are in there pay. Well, that's not an option. You know? Be like me saying, you know, if I was taller, uh, you know, it's not gonna work. You know, counties, counties have, you know, counties have raised sales taxes. Counties have, have raised some court fees and those, those kinds of things. You know, they, they use local laws to put on, put on fees on other activities, uh, whether it's been, you know, car tags. Uh, counties have done everything in the book because every county's different and every county's, um, economy's different and, and every county's, um, the current structure. You know, a county that's got a sales tax already at a certain rate, then discussing raising the sales taxes, you know, it's just not something you can do politically. Other counties' sales tax rate was at a point that you could raise it. And so, you know, trying to, trying to tell you what the best thing is up here, I, you bother, I don't know, but those, those are some of the things that are done. You know, there are some counties that have passed booking fees and sheriff, I, you know, I, I, I don't remember off the top of my head how much those are or how much money they would generate, but there are some counties that have passed some booking fees. I don't know what their experience has been with collecting those things. Okay? You know? It's like you see the TV commercials for these, for these attorneys who tell you they've got these big verdicts. Getting the verdict and collecting the verdict's two different things. So I don't know what the experience has been in other counties of collecting those things. They're pretty new. They're probably just two or three years ago when the first ones of those started being passed.
Talking about the legislature, you said to get help from them. I've heard there's no money for the jail.
I mean, no money.
Is there any money available we can get?
Oh, I got you. I, I do not, I, I'm not aware of, of any, uh, from the state. Now, you know, I, and this is not something that I've got expertise in, but, you know, we, I think it'd be worth the effort to try to find someone who, who's experienced in, you know, private grants and that kinda stuff that are out there to, to, to at least turn that rock over and make, make sure there's, there's, uh, that there's not something available that you could find. Is there money in the state budget to help, you know, uh, construct jails? Do they qualify for CDBG grants or anything like that? An answer to that's no. But, but can I tell you there's not some other source out there? Uh, I can't tell you there's not. You know, that's something I'll, I can, I can try to look for you too, let me do some, get somebody to do some searching for you.
Sonny, is there a list of things that must be incorporated in building a jail as far as creature coppers? Uh, that's what we're gonna be, you may, we don't.
Of course.
Is there a list?
Well, uh, yeah, there's, there are standards, there are, you know, there, there, there are jail standards adopted by three or four different national kind of associations or governing body. There's standards that the federal courts put, you know, put down through, through cases and establishing cases. And, you know, those, those are fairly readily available, uh, those, those are easy to get your hands on. You know, it's one of the problems that we faced with, with this whole idea that, that we shifted state inmates down to the counties. A county jail is not a prison, okay? It's not a prison, it's not designed for people to be here long-term, uh, cause there are things that have to go with that, you know? They're, they're full-time medical care professionals at a state prison. We, we can't afford to do that at county level, and it's not, it's not really what, what a jail's about. But yeah, Bobby, that, those standards are easy, and that's the kind of stuff where I was saying, you need to avail yourself of advice and resources, uh, that, that you can get your hands on, and from more than one place. You know, I don't, I'm, I'm not being critical of anybody, uh, including me. You don't, you don't need to listen to me and then run out and, and not talk to some other people either, you know?
We have a very large, like all counties evidently, when and how long has this medical, providing medical care part? You know, prisoners being incorporated, I mean, is there no way of, of, surely there's some people get put in jails without insurance, but what?
Well, um, the folks, the folks who are put in jail that have insurance, um, their insurance doesn't stop when they, when they go into jail, okay? You know, what, what does stop is, you know, those that are on Medicaid. We passed legislation, or the legislature passed for us legislation two years ago to suspend rather than, than stop their Medicaid benefits when, upon arrest. So that, the idea was, you had to take someone to a hospital and they had to stay overnight, if they were on Medicaid before they were arrested, then they'd be back on Medicaid in the hospital. We've had some implementation difficulties, uh, on, on that, we haven't, we haven't punted yet, but we've had some implementation difficulties. Would that be a source that would save you some money? Yeah. How much? I don't know, you know, I, I don't know. But yeah, the medical care costs, but if you build a new jail, don't build a new jail, you know? That's a whole different issue.
That's a very substantial situation there, one of their eighteen thousand or what?
Over two hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
It's over two hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
What does the law say about the med- about the medical? Do we, I know we gotta provide medical for them, but how, what extent do we gotta provide medical?
Well, uh, we get in federal court defending actions that occur in the jail. The test is a deliberate in, you know, do we exhibit a deliberate indifference to, to a serious medical need, okay? What does that mean, Sonny? Makes whatever the court says it means. You know, we, we have to respond to and provide a basic level of medical care for, for folks who are in, in the jail. And if we don't, the, the results almost always, you know, lawsuit, if anything, uh, anything goes wrong. You know, we have to, we have to respond to their pressing medical needs. We're not, we're not in a position to say, somebody who's complaining of chest pains, well, I'm sorry, you're in the jail, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna treat you. You know, the, uh, it, it, it's another thing that's not gonna change. You know, if we could all wave a magic wand and have, have a new jail right here, right this minute, and it didn't cost a penny to build it, you know, we just had it. Somebody, somebody in, in Washington DC said, you know what, I'd like to help Marion County, and they built one. The medical care thing, it's gonna be exactly the same, it's not gonna go away. And it's a huge problem. We've had, we've had lawsuits, uh, related to people who, who got arrested, uh, while they were ill. You know, I mean, it's hard to believe, but it happens, it happens. And that's not, it's not an issue that I, that, that any of us have a solution to, you know? The sheriff knew how to fix that, uh, he'd be traveling around the country, getting rich, telling people how to do it, and I'd be getting rich booking his speaking engagements for him, I mean, you know, if we, we knew how to fix that.
So the bottom line is, there's no funding for medical, there's no funding for a jail. We got the federal government bringing it under Nick, said we're gonna need to build one, are they gonna force us to? We got the state changing law in twenty fifteen, overpop- overpopulated the jails, and the counties were stuck with it.
I, I'm real good at my job, aren't I?
I'm good, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, I mean, is that the way it works?
Yeah, that's a good sum basis.
Yeah, I, that's pretty much where we are. You know, I, I, I mean, I'll tell you, you know, we, Sheriff's Association and us together, we're gonna get something fixed on the fifteen stuff, okay? But, that's not gonna change things. I mean, Sheriff, Sheriff may feel differently, I don't know that you'd be in that much of a different spot if what passed in fifteen hadn't passed. I mean, you know, you might, it might be fifteen or twenty percent less bad, but, uh, if that's a good term to use. You probably would still be where you are now, or you'd be, you'd be here six months from now, you know? No, it, 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 it's the physical plant of government, and the jail's part of the physical plant, you know? Those, those needs are as legitimate as, as every other need that we have in, in county government, you know? You know, there are counties wrestling now with, with their courthouses deteriorating, you know? Counties started talking about just tearing the courthouse down and doing something new, and their state center passed a constitutional amendment that said they couldn't, couldn't take court out of the courthouse unless, uh, the health department declared it unsafe for people to be in the building. You know, when, so I, it's, it's a physical plant issue as much as anything.
You know, I, Sheriff and I have been here about the same length of time, I can't imagine, uh, a bad situation between the sheriff and the county commission, when we've had such a good relationship, I mean, at best, uh, I'd hate to say, you know, we could be a whole lot worse than operating and things like that, and we've been, I think, we've been very fortunate for, uh, Sheriff, I've walked the road with, and here that we've had good situations, but still, it's come to the point in time, as he said, something's gotta be done.
You know, communication's the most important thing in just about any relationship, but certainly, certainly in government, you know? We, we'll just keep talking to each other, we'll eventually come to a place where we can figure something out. When we, we get to the place where we all run in our corners and draw our guns and start fighting in the newspapers and all that stuff, that's when trying to, to, to get a solution does out the window, you know?
So, am I reading you right, you suggest that we go in the community and get a community task force or something, give us some guidance? Help, you know?
Yeah.
To make this thing less political and more businesslike and, uh, have people that, uh, done this, been there, done this?
I, um, Mr. Chairman, something?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
I wrote, I wrote down four suggestions that, um, that I wanted to, after we talked and discussed back and forth, that I wanted to make to you this, this morning, and that's the first one. That, that, uh, I believe you need to, to begin a formal process of getting some community involvement and support for, for this project. I said already, you know, uh, to involve not just elected officials, but community leaders as well. I would encourage you to try to beat back the desire to appoint people, cause you already know what they think, you know? We, we wanna do this, so let's create a task force, and I wanna put my cousin, my cousin Vinnie on the task force, cause I know I can talk to him and get him to, you got it, to get, get him to see things the way I see things, you know? Y'all know who the leaders are, y'all know who the people are that help shape public opinion, uh, that are not elected officials. But then the elected officials that are gonna be operating in the jail need to be involved too, you know? I mean, uh, but I think that, and, and I'm not talking about a process that lasts a year or anything, I'm talking about getting a group together that'll get to work. And, and a group that can, you know, take the documents that, that I emailed to Brooke and then find some others that, that can get the issues on the table and talk it out, and then those are the people at church and the grocery store and civic club meetings who can be saying, y'all, this is problem, we gotta fix it. Instead of people saying in all those settings, I don't wanna pay another dime, you know, don't worry about it, you know? You, you, you need to generate some support. You know, and, and I think we need to, to, through that process, you know, give them a chance to offer you, you know, any perspectives and any ideas they have, you know? It's not to say that, that there's somebody in the community who might have ideas about a way we could attack this that we hadn't thought about, you know? That, that's certainly, that's certainly possible. And, and, and it's, it's important for there to be a community group, I think, because we're gonna need new revenue, you know? And I mean, I just, you know, that's gotta be on the table, that building a jail, there's gotta be revenue to pay for it. And that's gonna, that's gonna take, uh, that's gonna take community, uh, support. Uh, secondly, I would encourage you to, um, evaluate your needs before deciding what you're gonna build, okay? Again, that's a, that's just a business approach, before I, you know, what, what, what are my needs? What is it that I need to be able to do? What are, what are the problems I need to be able to solve versus, um, you know? Well, in X county, they built this, let's build that, you know? What is it we need here? Uh, and let's evaluate that before we start deciding, uh, what to, what to build, you know? And, and, you know, what's driving the inmate growth? We've talked about some of those things, are there other ways to curb some of that? Can, can, can we identify any other ways that we could save money? Those are all things, again, this committee can talk about, but, but more from a perspective of, um, what do we need before we move on? And then, then thirdly, realistically, uh, to identify, how, how much jail can you afford? That, that moves into the realm of trying to identify some revenue sources and how much money you can get from those revenue sources. That's gonna have to drive your project in, in many ways, you know? You know, you're, you're, um, I suspect in Marion County, it's like every other county your size, you've already cut the operation of county government pretty tight, you know? So, um, the idea that, that you can, you can't move forward, in my opinion, without identifying how much jail you can afford, how much revenue can you raise? And what part of that has gotta be set aside for increased operating costs? Medical care is one of those, you know? But, but the other operational costs are just gonna continue to go up, y'all, you know? Sheriff's heard me say this, y'all heard me say this, uh, the poorest paid, poorest trained employees in county government make life and death decisions every day, you know? Folks who were in that jail last night, operating it, they made life and death decisions last night, and they're the poorest paid people in county government. And, um, you know, that, that is, that's another problem, I didn't even come up here to talk about that, that's another problem, you know? There's a guy in the legislature for years named J. Turner from Downey Mobile, who used to get up, and if he was opposed to something, he began what he was gonna say with, now you need to understand where I stand on this is based on where I sit. Where, where I come from, you know, it, uh, shapes my opinion, and, and there's no question that there are some, there are things about, where law enforcement comes from in Alabama, uh, that shake the challenges y'all face. And one of those is, is employee recruitment and employee retention, uh, which we're not gonna solve with building a new jail, but that is a problem, uh, not just in this, in, in the jail, but it's acute there. Cause all these medical decisions that have to be made, they're, they're being made by, by, by folks who, um, who have an annoyance response to them. And then I would encourage you to identify two or three sources of advice, um, that you can turn to and rely on that don't have a vested interest in getting hired, okay? Well, that, that may be somebody in the community, you know, will help you, but you need folks other than just us. You need a couple of people that, that, that you can rely on for advice, you know? Maybe there's somebody at the university that, that's in, um, that, that's in criminal justice, you know? Just find a source of, of someone who can be a resource that, in the end, you know, doesn't really have a vested interest in what you do, other than trying to give you good advice. And those would be the four things I was gonna kind of put on the table for you this morning, so.
I got a question. Like these, these, this great advice, and out of the sixty-seven counties left in Alabama, do you know of any one of them that's followed this advice and sort of same shape we in? And how they funded their jail, and what, what kind of jail they've got, and how it, the community was involved? I'm saying, I know it's not perfect, but they sort of went with this plan, and it worked out. Do you, can you, can you name any counties we can talk to that's done, went through this process?
Well, I, I, have y'all talked to the folks in, in Winston? Y'all, y'all talked to Roger and him? I don't know how formal they got with their committee, but they involve the public. They're, they, this is how they did it in Elmore, but it's been twenty years probably since they built their jail in Elmore. Uh, but they, they have a community, uh, group. Their rev- but their revenue stream's different than yours, they're right outside Montgomery. People been moving from Montgomery to, to Elmore and Togga County for as long as I've been in Montgomery. So their revenue stream is different than yours, you know? Now, I mean, I'll tell you, and, and the sheriff will chase me back to my car about this, and I, I'm joking. But, you know, fifteen, no longer than that, twenty years ago probably, we passed the statute allowing counties to build joint jails, you know? I always thought somebody would look at that before, uh, before my career ended. I know there's been a, been one place in the state where there have been some decently serious discussions about it, I'm not advocating that up here, I'm just saying to you, I think every rock ought to be kicked over, uh, and, and, and evaluated. You know, can I tell you a county commission that had to raise revenue to build a jail that, that ran on that the next time they ran for reelection? The answer's no. I mean, I, I can't point to any, to any county that would've gotten out front advocating new revenue to build a jail that that was the, the basis of, of them wandering off for reelection, you know? Cause it's not, it's not gonna be popular, it's just not. It's not gonna be popular for the people who have to go to Montgomery either, you know, it's not gonna be, you know? It's not why, it's not why any of them ran, you know? I've never seen a single person with any kind of, of political handouts that said, I wanna improve education, economic development, raise your taxes to build a jail, you know, make, you know? I'm being silly, but I mean, uh...
I think every county touched in Marion County, Franklin, Winston, they've all got new jails. I don't, but I don't think Lamar has.
Lamar was built right after I was back in 89, 81 maybe.
Right before.
Right before I started, something like that.
Yeah. What do you think would be a good number for a committee? I was thinking the other day, I made a suggestion, somebody said something about it, that I thought each commissioner knows his district, knows the people in their district, the people that's out in the public that's got their heads on. I was just thinking maybe 10 is a number, and that would let each commissioner pick two in their district to represent and to inform that committee and get it started, you know? Does that sound like a good number, or would you recommend more or less?
Um, I think the number is less important than who it is.
Right.
Who it is. If the number is, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a committee that, you know, I mean, I'd have a member of the legislature on the committee. I mean, you know, I'd, I'd have, I'd have somebody from law enforcement. I'd have, I'd have somebody from, from the judicial branch, you know?
Somebody from the bigger percentage.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, I think if, you know, if we had a whiteboard in here, I could walk over there to it, and we could make the list of the kinds of people that it ought to be, you know, the, that's much more important than who, you know? It's much, it's much more important than who.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's touching on your basis, you know?
And I was thinking too, with the, with the commissioner's appointing goes, it would be in different areas, because I don't know all the people in Winfield, Tim knows, but we don't know the people that I know on the north side, you know, to, to spread it out over the whole county and get the county working together as a whole, instead of just saying, save one group, come out of Hamilton, you know? If we all put all Hamilton's people in it, we got Winfield, Reddick, and everywhere, and Beale County, or Hackleburg like that, it'd be spread out. But just make good decisions on who you put on this committee is the most important thing.
Would, would this committee have a chairman, or would just like our chairman of our commission be kind of the chairman of the committee?
Well...
You would have to have a leader.
Yeah, you got, you gotta have a chairman. You gotta have a chairman. And again, I'm, you know, I think Brooke's got the, one of the, one of the, the publications that I'm gonna leave you with is about, about all this right on point. It's from the U.S. Justice Department called Building Community Support for New Jail Construction. And it's got, it's pretty much got step by step, you know, you gotta have a chair. Again, who it is is more important in the community, and I can't, I can't tell you who that used to be, but I don't live up here, you know? We, we were in Montgomery, you know, I, I can give you a list of six, eight, or 10 people, but it ought to be, it ought to be one of those, you know? I would, I, I would, thinking of how word my, word run, I'll say carefully, those, those people that I, I work for, I wouldn't worry near as much about how the people got appointed as, as I would about who are the people we need, who are the people we need, you know? Who, who are, you know, and who, who are the people we need, there's a long list of, you know, who's gonna be willing to do it, who, you know, and there's, there's only a certain kind of community oriented leaders who are gonna say, yeah, I'll give, I'll give up my Monday night football watching and come and work on this for the next three months, okay? Not everybody's gonna be willing to do that. But there are people who will, that, you know, that the community's important to them, and it, and it will be willing to serve. So, you know, we can make, you know, we can make that list. It's pretty easy. Y'all, y'all are the ones that have to do it. And how they get appointed, that's less important, you know, it really is, than, than who they You know, sheriff's gotta be on the committee, but I love sheriff, I'll say this out front, but he can't dominate the committee, you know? A house or senate member's gotta be on the committee, but they can't dominate the committee. The chairman's gotta be on the committee, but he can't, if he dominates the committee, then it ain't a committee anymore. And suddenly the committee will become a negative instead of a positive.
Don't you think it's important to say that the community, see the committee operating, with all due respect to the commission, almost independent of the commission, and then the A commissioner or the commissioners come and tell their needs and, and make comments before the committee, and then the commission kind of steps aside? I think it's more important people see them operating as a freestanding, independent group.
I would absolutely agree with that. I think that's what you'll, you'll read in here, is that, that to, to generate public support, you know, you've got to, you've gotta let the public build public support, you know, and, you know, and, and trust the public to do that. In the end, if you don't have it, the whole project's gonna fall on its, fall on its face anyway, you know? I mean, if you don't have public support, and you can't get a revenue measure passed because you don't have public support, then we're right back here next year. We're right, I mean, we're right back here again. All looking at each other going, what do we do now? You don't have a good plan, you know? And to me, it's, to me, it's less about where's it gonna be, what's it gonna look like, who's gonna draw the plans, who, it's, it's, it's less about all that and more about generating support for the fact that, that it's in the best interests of the community that you have a new jail. You know, you get that done, where it's gonna go, and how it's gonna look, is it, you know, that'll all take care of itself. That'll all take care of itself, you know? If you, if you generate support for getting it done. And that's, that's against our nature in government, you know? First thing we want to talk about, we're gonna build a jail, where's it gonna be? What's it gonna look like? Who's gonna draw the plans? Who's gonna be the construction company? That, that's not, that, that's, to me, that's not the issue. The issue is, can we get the public to be supportive of, of us having a new jail? When we get there, the rest of it, you know, can, can work itself out, you know? Those are details. I almost got thrown out of a negotiating meeting in the, up at the State House four or five years ago. I don't even remember what the issue was, but we were talking about it, and somebody from another industry asked me a question which would be like, how big is the jail gonna be? You know, we're working on this, and he asked me this question that's way out here, that we don't have to worry about yet. And I said, you know, that's kind of like asking, asking a woman on the first date, what color bridesmaid's dress does she want, you know? That, that ain't real relevant right now, you know? So, you know, I think, y'all need to get started on that, in my opinion. And, and I know the community's aware of the issue, you know, being aware of the issue and, and embracing the issue and what comes with it are two different things, you know? You know, we, I don't think there's any question in 2013, when we started talking about the need to get more money to improve our road system, you know, there wasn't a soul who didn't want better roads. I mean, you couldn't stop anybody and say, you want us to fix our roads? And them go, no, I like them just like they are, you know? The difficulty began when we said, okay, to fix our roads, this is what we gotta do. And then those people would go, huh, never mind. You know, it took, it took education. It took the same kind of process to, to get us to where we, where we arrived there, so. It's a long answer to that question, lady.
I also realize that we, what I'm saying, each county has a debt ceiling. Am I correct on this, that we have to operate under?
That's right. That's right. It's constitutional debt limit, you know, there, there, again, there are other financing tools that, that can be available to you that are outside that debt limit. But, but yeah, I mean, there's a debt limit. There, there is. I suspect what's more relevant for Marion County is how much money can you raise, not whether or not you got room to, to borrow against that. I might be wrong, but, you know? You know, from, from a revenue stream point of view, I, I suspect that's gonna drive this as much as anything, you know? You know, and I, I thought of this analogy last night, and I wrote it down somewhere, and I didn't, I didn't write this down, you know? Kathy, Kathy's driving a 2012 Hyundai Sonata. You know, it's time for us to get a new, get her another car if I want to stay married. You know, there, there are certain car lots we're gonna go look at a car, and then there are other car lots we're not gonna bother, we're not gonna bother to go. Because those, their cars on that lot we can't afford, you know? So, I think that, that's, that's gonna drive this, you know? If, if you had unlimited money, would you need a committee? No. You wouldn't, you know? If you had a million and a half a year that you were just socking away in the bank, you, you wouldn't need a committee, you know? You'd get two or three architects to come in here and make you proposals, and you'd pick one and you'd rock and roll. That ain't where we are, I don't think.
Way, way, way away from there.
Which I think is why we're all saying, what do we, what do we do now?
Anybody, Scott, you got any questions?
Thanks, Scott.
Well, we really appreciate you coming up here, Sonny.
You're, you're very welcome. Yeah, I wrote, can I say two or three other little things since I wrote this down last night?
Oh, yeah.
I was just gonna close by saying, you know, allow the process to work. Be respectful of the sheriff and the challenges that he faces on a daily basis, you know? Recognize that this will not be painless for you or for anybody else involved. It's not, it's not gonna be. Y'all all try to stay on the same page with each other. And then try to make the best, most informed business decision you can, and try to avoid political entitlements. Try to, try to make the best decision you can without allowing the axle to get twisted up with politics, you know? Somebody, some folks would say I'm living in a dream world, if I want to say that, but, but in the end, that's, that's what having a good leadership's about, is being willing to recognize we're in a place where, you know, there are no political points to be gained by anybody in building a jail. So there are really no political points to be gained by arguing about it, you know? You know, I don't think there are any points to be gained by building it or to, or by arguing about it. We're in a place where, you know, I say to county administrators all the time, there are only 66 other people in the state who have any idea of what Brooke does every day. If you're not a county administrator, you ain't got, you ain't got a clue. There are only a handful of people in Marion County who understand the significance of the problem you face. And y'all need to stick together and communicate it to everybody. Now, it's when we seem just as I am.
Gentlemen, I would tell you, I've been sheriff a long time here in Marion County. I've had an issue with jail for a long time now. But what I did learn a long time ago was even if you have 80 in jail or 170, what we had before, those people have families. They have a mama and a daddy and an aunt, uncle, brother and sister. If they think for one instance, me or my staff are mistreating me, they take it out on me, and then they're gonna take it out on me. And each and every one of you, I believe, have had some family that was in my jail as long as my family is in there too. We have a duty and obligation to protect those. And Ken, you raised some good points about medical issues. I had a situation last night, an inmate that I've had in jail before numerous times, had heart condition, had to send him to the E L. He's still at the hospital today. Those are decisions we have to make. I learned in my first term, guys, I was sued in federal court. The lawsuit didn't include the Marion County Commission on medical issues. And Scott, you're probably aware of this, Mark Hammett was our county attorney. That is where we're at today as far as the contract with a medical provider, because at that time, we didn't have anybody. Luckily, the Marion County Commission didn't get sued, but we ended up settling out of court. I went to federal court. It's not fun. I don't want to sit down here in any, any part. That's where we're at, and I, I think y'all understand that part. I wrote this, I bought, I've worked with you. Going on 17 years now, it's been wonderful. We've had a good relationship, working relationship, there's no doubt. I understand the county government. I'm not a sheriff, I never have been a sheriff to stand up. I'm not in here every meeting saying, I need this, I need this, I need this. I use our discretionary monies that I have to make sure and to provide what I can and take the burden off y'all's back. Now, the jail situation, I'm not gonna say another word. We're gonna meet whenever we can. Y'all know where we're at. I hate to tell you this, the ball's in your court. This county government, required by the constitution of the state of Alabama East, county will have a jail in, in the county. County commission's in charge of it. Jail, the sheriff runs and operates. That's where we're at. So I'm putting in the work with y'all, I mean, the best that I can. I understand, being in the business as long as I've been in the business, what we need, and Sonny, what I worry about. It's the future, and you can't worry about the future. You're not supposed to worry about anything, but what we build today is gonna have to last us another four years. But what we have has been four years.
That's right.
Is it gonna be big enough? No, sir, I understand that. But we've got, we've got to build it big enough that we can have what we have today. And I've had a, as a hunter, been said before, in my county jail, that sleeps 85. I've got a lot of pressure on it. I really have, from, from every different situation, every site. You know, I hate to tell you this, but you know it, I'm under staff and underpaid. You made a good point about jailers and dispatchers that we have are the least paid in the county government, I believe. And they have to make critical decisions on a daily basis, 24 hours a day, because we're open 24 hours a day. We don't just shut down and hang out. Somebody's And that's what I've said. I appreciate y'all's time. I appreciate Sonny coming up here, valuable experience that he has, and trying to give us some direction on his way to go.
Tracy, can I ask you something?
I'm willing to work with you. I think you all know that everybody around that table I consider a friend. As we find ourselves in a position none of us wish we were in, the sheriff deals with this every day, and something's gonna have to be done. And it sounds like the next step, according to Sonny, is, is get your group together, folks that represent us countywide, that, that are your stakeholders in this process, that can bring some good level-headed common sense. Things, things we don't seem to have much in government need to level anymore is common sense, and, and let them come back to us and bring some ideas to the table.
Anybody else got anything? Questions, comments? Sonny, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for you coming up and, and your great wisdom.
I'm dealing, as I said, it's a situation we must face. It's not gonna go away. We will be positive and, and work together, and...
No, it's not going away. Not going away.
No, no. We can put your head and say it.
No, and it's, it's something we've all got to work with. I'm appreciative of the sheriff for being as patient as he has with us. We're learning. I feel like we're doing the best we can with what we got to do with at the moment. Anybody else have anything? Have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote aye.
All vote aye.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.